All right, we have three recognitions and we're gonna start with the National FFA Conference performer.
Thank you very much. And yeah, this is an exciting one. So tonight, there's gonna be this recognition and a report. Both are celebrations of our Ag Science Program, Agricultural Science and FFA. And this first celebration is a celebration of amazing talent, but I am going to turn it over to Mr. Ballard to introduce this amazing talent.
Well, good evening. You know, we love, we love having the opportunity to celebrate some of our amazing talent.
Trambull.
No, when?
Oh, when?
Yes.
Oh, I performed in October to November. It was October, I think, twenty-seventh to November third. There were five days in there where we performed like ten to fifteen times for everybody at the convention. And sometimes we were playing for just people out and about in Indianapolis. But in total, there were probably seventy thousand people there at the convention and almost all of them probably watched us perform.
That's great. Thanks for representing our community.
Yeah, thank you.
So next up, we want to do the law enforcement appreciation next. Tara?
You bet. Tomorrow is National Law Enforcement Day and in honor of our two school resource officers, just wanted to bring them this evening to put some names with faces. Do you guys wanna just stand up? I won't make you prepare anything at the microphone, so don't panic. Officer Tracy Hall, many of you are probably familiar with her face. She has housed over middle schools, parts of middle school and elementaries. But new to us this year is Officer Andrew Traeger, who is at our high school. So huge thanks to you both for your community, for your service for our community and most importantly, to our schools.
Thank you very much. Yes, that's a well-earned, well-deserved appreciation there. All right, last up, we have the AP Honorable, Dave?
Yeah, sir, we're actually moving that to the next meeting.
Oh.
I said move that, that'll be better.
Oh, you meant move it to February. Okay, that's fine. All right, that's three minutes added to that meeting. All right, very good. Do we have any citizens requesting to speak?
Are any citizens that want a chance to speak tonight?
All right, don't see any. Then we'll move on to the Ag Science Update. Now that's Dave.
Yes, that is me. Thank you very much. And this is another celebration. It's a curricular report, but certainly a celebration. So I'm going to invite Andy Cuffel, our Agricultural Science teacher, up with Keegan and Cece, two students and both FFA members and students in the Agricultural Science Program. And you can certainly sit at the table if you want, a little bit easier. And Keegan said something during his presentation. He said, "Why not?" And in taking these opportunities, seeing these opportunities, seizing these opportunities, and I think that Andy embodies that sort of spirit of saying, "What are these opportunities? What could we do with this?" And she's gonna share a little bit about what she was able to do with the Ag Science Program. It's been absolutely remarkable. So I'm gonna turn it over to her to share a little bit about Agricultural Science and FFA.
Yes. Okay, perfect. So as Dave said, there's been a lot of change in the Ag Department in the past couple of years. This is my third year at Hudson. And we've made quite a few changes. If you see on our beautiful flow chart, we've added quite a few courses and created set pathways for students to go through. So they start with their Intro to Ag course, which the first time it was taught was my first year teaching here. And then they move to Animal Science One, Plant Science One, and Wildlife and Natural Resources, based on their interests. Then moving on to Animal Science Two and Plant Science Two. And then lastly, a new course for next year that all of you lovely people approved was our Agricultural Research and Development Capstone specifically for seniors with an agricultural passion. And it's really, really brought in. So my first year here, I wasn't even teaching full-time Ag courses. I was also teaching a little bit of science and had a study hall. And my Vet Science class only had twelve students in it. And now we've expanded so much that a science teacher also is teaching some Ag courses because I'm overloaded. We have over three hundred and seventy-five high school students who are taking agriculture courses right now. And it just keeps going. Something to showcase is the Ag Ed model. That's that three-circle model there that has classroom instruction, SAE, and FFA or leadership. SAE is all, Ag Ed students also have a, essentially a passion project in agriculture outside of school hours that they keep records on to dig deeper and explore. So that could be working at a local horse farm. It could be working in a vet clinic. It could be starting their own business, having their own garden, et cetera, whatever their passion is. And they can earn awards through that as well, through FFA and fully round out their agricultural education. But enough for me. These two have taken tons of Ag courses, have deep-dived into FFA, and they're way more exciting to listen to. But we're gonna take a look, and we've got several other slides. I know Cece was gonna chat with you a little bit about her experience with taking Ag courses because she's taken almost everything up there and about the Ag Research and Development.
So like Ms. Cuffel said, I've pretty much taken almost every Ag class that there is, and I only started taking them last year. And I'm, well, next year. I'm super excited for the Senior Capstone, Capstone because like, not only is it like a new class where I can like explore more into like the Ag world and FFA, but I can also like add that into like more of like where I wanna study for school. Because since Cuffel has, she's kind of worn off on me a little bit. And I've wanted to become an Ag teacher after starting from wanting to be a conservation warden, kinda turned it over more to Ag education world. Then that up there, that's our, it's more of a like, what would you, like a science fair type project. So we get to compete against other, well, it's not really competing. It's more like this showcase displaying what we've worked on. So that is Xander up there. He did a independent study for a class last year, and he went to a, what was it? A
To State.
Well, no, it was, he went to some like snake thing.
Carpenter Nature Center?
Yeah. That. He went there and he worked with the snakes. He looked at like their behaviors through like the changes and like sheds and like the different things that he did with them. He monitored to see like the changes and all that. And he ended up winning second or third last year at State with his display there.
So something cool is we currently don't have a course to deep dive on the behavior of snakes. That is not something that is in our curriculum. And he had kinda capped out on courses he could take and that were in his interest area. So we were able to actually try out the Ag Research and Development, the structure of that course as an independent study for him. And so he got to explore his passion area in still a structured environment. That he wrote a fourteen-page research paper, competed in front of judges, displayed with his whole board, and it was a semester-long, in-depth project that each of our seniors are gonna be able to do next year in their, in their passion areas. And then if you wanna tap to the next slide, we can have Keegan take away on that.
All right, so some of the things that we do in FFA are our Kids Fest, where we have had a lot of people come and see all the things we have to do with FFA. You can see there, we have some live animals there and other games that we do to try and get people to learn more about FFA. We have our Soil Team up there in a hole, and they did very well. We have our, was it?
Fall Leadership.
Fall Leadership. And that was at Chippewa Falls. And you can see everybody there. We all got to go to different classrooms and the state officers, we got to learn about a bunch of different things, about teamwork and how to lead. And then, yeah, there's me for band. So yeah, there's a wide variety of things that we can do with FFA, and there's more to come.
Do you have any questions for any of our members present?
Yes, Megan.
I just wanna say thank you for coming tonight. These classes look fantastic. I wish I could take them. And when we toured the high school last spring with Representative Tiffany, we popped into your class. And I was like, "This is so cool. I wanted to stay here and, and see what the students are learning." So thank you so much for sharing and thanks to the students who are exploring all this. And I'm excited to hear how those capstones go next here.
Mr. President, I'm just curious, and this might be a question more for Mr. Gramble or somebody else in the administration, but given our close proximity to UWRF and their focus on Ag, do we have any partnership discussions in process where we can maybe further what our students can study through AP or anything like that?
Yeah, that's a great question. And when Andy came forward with this new course proposal, that was one of the first questions we asked. How can we explore dual-credit opportunities? So yes, we are going to be exploring that. No, we haven't done anything specifically yet, but it is on the radar.
Well, thank you very much for, you know, telling us what, what this is like, what it means to you. And I, I also share in that. I think I've said it a hundred times in the years I've been on that. I was in FFA and competed. I didn't do, we did soil testing. You showed one team in, in the hole there. But we never got to play instruments, which is probably a good thing because I can't but we did do, you know, meat judging and know your cuts of meat. But that, all of that is, you know, pretty worthwhile stuff. But I really liked the, the Capstone Project, getting into details and stuff that shows people's, you know, passions. And that's what we want. We just, we don't just educate and give you information. We want to, you know, foster those passions so that they take off in the future. And who knows, you might be pursuing master's programs in something very detailed that could change, you know, our whole economy. So anyway, thank you for your participation in your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now one of our others that we recognized, the law enforcement folks are here to talk about school resource officers' introduction to DARE.
Yep, this time I'm gonna have Sally Pernow, our Prevention Specialist and Officer Hall, come up to talk about, and Andrew will hang around if he wants to for questions. To talk about DARE. Last time you saw some of these folks, we were talking about reactive things we were doing. They're not proactive. So we were bringing up tonight's proactive things. They're gonna share part of the DARE training that Tracy was able to complete. It's different if somebody just needed in DARE when we were all kids going through school. So I'm gonna give it to them to share and then type the questions.
All right. Yeah, so we're gonna bring, thank you. We're bringing DARE back to Hudson or into Hudson here. I just got done with a two-week training in October. I'm pretty excited to bring this back. DARE began in nineteen eighty-three in Los Angeles. That's the old-school DARE that you guys may have known, like the Just Say No, the resistant type thing, where now it's morphed into more of a curriculum of teaching like risk and consequences and a lot more involved throughout. So it's a lot better curriculum, database things of that. We are responsible for decision-making skills and to help them lead safe and healthy lives. Not just focused on drugs. It's more even the vaping, respect of others, cyberbullying. It's a lot wider spectrum of things. It is a K through twelve, which is nice. We were in CounterACT previously, but that was more focused just for fifth grade, where this encompasses all grade levels, which is really nice. Talks about two thousand law enforcement agencies delivering this program to over one point two million students in over five thousand communities, and it's growing rapidly. This new program that's pushed out is growing a whole lot more and faster.
And now that this is a new evidence-based curriculum, we were able to write it into the AODA grant through DPI, and that's how we were able to pay for training and purchase some of the materials.
As I said, it kinda focuses on all-encompassed, the opioids, drugs, teen suicide, social media, and vaping. And it is taught by us as police officers. We have to have so many years of experience before we can even go to training. And then it's a two-week training, and then we do classes throughout every year to keep up to date. The overview, so the early grades is gonna be your pre-K through fourth grade. Pre-K to second is gonna be more of our poster cards, their big poster cards, where we facilitate conversation with the kiddos, more on safety, when to call nine-one-one, feelings, how to respond, things of that. Third through fourth grade is a little bit more curriculum-based, but it's a standalone program. It's not the building blocks that like the elementary school is for fifth and sixth grade. That's what's this thing. So it's a ten-week course, forty-five-minute lessons. And every day we'll work through, or every class period we'll work through the binder. And it's a building block curriculum. Same with the middle school. Middle school is also a ten-week building blocks. They build off of each other curriculum. It is the fastest-growing one in the US right now for the middle school level. It's growing rapidly. The high school curriculum are standalone curriculum. So if we're having issues with vaping, we can focus on that and put those curriculums in. If we have other issues that are getting highlighted, we can focus just on those. We can pick and choose what we want to present. And then there's other things that we can do for like parent-teacher conferences, different community outreach stuff they have as well. So that's pretty much what I did. It's, it is multicultural. They also have them in different languages, the workbooks. So then we can get those out to Spanish-speaking students as well. It is evidence-based, and we do have to be DARE-certified to be able to present it. So it can't be like the AODA teacher or counselor here can't do it. We have to.
Okay, just I have a question about that. So you are going there once a week for forty-five minutes straight. It's not like three, broken into three fifteen-minute sessions or anything. You're going once a week for ten weeks for forty-five minutes?
Correct.
Got it.
Yep. Next slide. So our next steps is I'm gonna pilot it at Hudson Prairie. We came to the conclusion of Hudson Prairie for the proximity, as I'm primarily at the middle school, so it's within proximity of me. So I can be readily available. Plus, there's four homerooms there, so I get more reps in there as well and get more of a collection of students to see how this is going to work. I start that in February, and we will go through beginning of May when we'll have our graduation. So I'm looking forward to that. And then we will work with the other principals and other fifth-grade teachers in the other buildings and hopefully get this implemented in all the buildings, starting in the fall, and split them up between some of the schools will be in the fall and some of the schools would be in the spring. And then we'll go that way.
I was just curious, obviously I haven't seen DARE, you know, the logo or anything. Is this a resurgence, like another rollout from that programming that is now, has a new life? Or you had mentioned you were using CounterACT or something?
So we went to CounterACT. I don't know why. When I started, we were CounterACT. When I started with Hudson PD. So I start, I was doing CounterACT well before a school resource officer. But I don't know, did we ever do DARE here in Hudson? Do you know, anyone? I don't know if we did.
I'm not sure about DARE. It sounded like we were doing CounterACT. It was one of those pre-COVID things, and it fizzled away.
Yeah, COVID, yep.
If, my understanding also, it's not evidence-based, evidence-based, so we weren't able to get grant funding to continue with that. So there's very specific rules on what we're looking at for that. So we wanted to look at some K-12 systems, and DARE came to our attention with the new version, especially being evidence-based, knowing that we could have the dollars to support it this round.
And Officer Hall mentioned the graduation piece of it, too. One of the things that we're really hopeful for is that you can really become a DARE community. You know, you get buy-in from families, and it's a big celebration piece, too. So this is more of just an all-inclusive. CounterACT, I think, was probably, I don't know much about it. I think it was a good program. It was originally from Hazelton, but they are no longer updating it. And so anything that we are working with from CounterACT is going. And this is kind of a living program.
And CounterACT was primarily just fifth grade. Where here, I'll be able to ideally go into the K through two grades and kinda start implementing the DARE conversations and then work our way through and do elementary school and middle school. And then if Officer Traeger needs to hit something up at the high school level, you know, we can get to that point. But make it like a culture in all three grades.
I just wanna say thank you for putting in the time to go to the training. I'm, I did DARE in my younger years. This new curriculum sounds great. How you're really looking at the emotional issues that are related to, to making safe choices. And I'm very excited about these activities or, or talks for families. I think, you know, I have two young kids, and you think, "How do I broach this subject? When do I bring it up? What's the age-appropriate way to talk about it without freaking kids out, you know?" So it's, when you're parents, you're figuring out for the first time how to do this. So getting guidance is gonna be really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go to the next slide.
So this is more, this is not related to DARE necessarily, but just a follow-up after our talk last year when we came to you guys and shared everything that we were doing. We do now have vape detectors installed at the high school and the middle school. They are not in every bathroom, but we put them as many as we could with the budget that we had. And, oop, sorry. So we have those going. At the middle school this year, they have been highly, highly successful at deterring any vaping behavior. That's been really wonderful. At the high school, they are alerting approximately ten times a day. Would you agree with that? One thing we did learn pretty quickly is that like aerosol deodorants, like Axe Body Spray or something like that, does also set it off. But that is kind of where we're at now and just trying to respond to all those alerts as best we can.
Okay, and so what is being done to address that? And I don't even know, is ten alerts a day, is that high for somebody from, for a district our size or for a high school our size?
Yeah, I would say for our student side of the high school. I would say ten is, yeah, about average for what we do a day. And we're finding, we're writing municipal citations for nicotine vaping devices as well as THC vaping devices we're finding very frequently with our students. So these, I can highly attest to that these are a great investment for our school, and I, I think all of our bathrooms at the high school should have them.
So when an alert goes off, if it is during a class period, then administration and Officer Traeger goes back on cameras to see who was walking in or out and then conducts a search. If it's during passing time, though, with eighteen hundred kids walking in and out, that can be a real challenge. So for this year, we were at sixteen tobacco or drug use offenses. That is out of date as of right now. Nicotine use is down, though. So I think what Traeger, Officer Traeger and I are seeing is when they are vaping, it's most commonly THC. And with the Delta Eight and Delta Nine products that you can purchase in town, we're seeing a lot of that. And I think that that will not change. But yes, nicotine use on the most recent Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which we just got in December, showed that that was down to twelve percent, which is good. We also have now at our disposal, the county purchased a program called Cognito. It's a virtual like decision-making kind of module that students can go through once they've been caught. Unfortunately, as soon as they purchase that, it, they, the company announced that they are going out of business this spring. So we kind of have one time to give it a shot and see how we like it, and then maybe look around for something different that we could use when that does sunset.
Any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I wanna thank you for your report. I think, you know, we use the term, you know, social, emotional. And there are some folks out there who are bashing that, saying that we need to, you know, take that out of our schools and just stick with curriculum, pure curriculum, so to speak. But to me, this is a prime example of the success it can have when you are teaching this stuff. Ten lessons, forty-five minutes, that's seven and a half hours over the course of an entire school year, right? So that, to me, is a small investment of time, but it can pay big dividends. And I don't know what our average parent time is in talking about this stuff. But I, I, I'm afraid some families, it's not always, it takes teamwork, though, with families to get this to stick. So I think we need to hold up our end from the school's part of this, as far as teaching the downside, so to speak, to, you know, risky behavior and, you know, big upside, just leading healthy lives. So I like that emphasis in this program. Anything else? Otherwise, thank you very much for your report and for all your work. Next up, Tracy, we have the independent auditor. You see Jonathan's here, and it looks like he's brought company.
Thank you for having me. And here, I thought you just brought all the security to have, you know, all my adoring fans at bay for, for my presentation. Thank you for having me. My name is Jonathan Sherwood. I'm a principal with Clifton, Larson, Allen. I'm in charge of the day-to-day operations of the actual audit and then take responsibility over the actual audit report as well and its full issuance. So during my presentation, I know there's a few faces here, I try to take things Um, so during my presentation, I know there's a few faces here, I try to take things fairly high level and um, kind of go as quickly as I can. But still give you the detail that is really pertinent to the decision makers here. Um, that being said, if there's any questions throughout my presentation, feel free to, you know, stop me, ask me a question. If I don't know the answers, that's why I brought reinforcements with me. So thank you, Tracy. Um, want to start off with just thanking you, um, for obviously having me here tonight. And it's also thanking all the district staff that makes the audit process run as smoothly as possible. Um, you know, from an independent auditor standpoint, you know, we need to come in here and actually audit the records of the district. And having them in the best shape possible um, makes our job a lot, go a lot smoother. Uh, there's a lot of brand new regulations, uh, DPI requirements, as well as accounting regulations and different accounting standards that we have to implement. That, that's enough of a challenge than coming into some districts where maybe they don't even have cash reconciled for the year. So from even the, the very basic building blocks, Hudson's in very good hands and all the records are in very good shape. Um, Tracy and her team and all the other district staff that we have to deal with and ask some kind of annoying questions at times. I'm certainly, you know, the necessary evil at times. I understand that. So we very much appreciate it. Uh, just to start off my presentation, um, just a couple of um, housekeeping items for us, so to speak. Um, in terms of the audit report, so when you, when we look at audited financial statements, the technical document that CLA owns and we actually grant is only like a three page document. It's the audit opinion of the financial statements. It's our opinion over the district's amounts and the district's disclosures in the ninety five or one hundred page report. So over that three page report, our audit opinion basically states that we're issuing an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. So that's the highest level of assurance that an independent auditor can grant over financial statements. That's our goal. Uh, DPI won't let us accept or won't accept anything less than that. So we're happy to report that we were able to issue our uh, report um, by their twelve fifteen deadline and meeting all of the rigorous standards that were required to meet. Um, as part of our audit as well, we issue a couple other reports or a couple other letters. One of them be, being our management representation letter, um, or the, the management letter overall. Basically communicating to you folks if there's any major red flags or items that would need to be, that are important enough to be raised up and discussed in a meeting such as today. Normally in the past in my, my presentation, there's usually one or two items here that we always just have to, you know, talk about. And it's fairly common a district your size to have, to have at least one, if not two findings or material weaknesses that we would discuss. Uh, this year is a complete, um, it's completely different, completely different because we actually don't have to report any findings for us this year. Uh, which is a tremendous accomplishment. Um, you know, a district your size usually does have a few hiccups here or there of, you know, from the accounting perfection, profession, it's kind of almost a gotcha of you all, yeah, technically you're, you're pretty good overall, but what about, did you think about X, Y, Z? So we're happy to report that we don't even have to report material audit adjustments, which is probably the most common thing that we have to um, report at meetings like this. So through the course of our audit work, we didn't record any, um, or we didn't propose any audit adjustments that were material enough that would impact the reader of your financial statements. Sure, there was things that we had to work with Tracy and her team to figure out and readjust and get in line with DPI's, you know, rigorous iron thumb of where they want things specifically recorded. Um, but that's just the, you know, end of the day, didn't report that, or it doesn't change your bottom line by enough to really swing anybody's decisions. So that's a tremendous accomplishment. Um, another one of the reports that we have to issue is just a compliance report. So since the district receives federal funding, um, if it's over a certain level of federal funding, we have to then uh, do what's known as a federal single audit. That single audit uh, limit is just seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal, uh, federal dollars. So every year for the most part, or every year Hudson is going to have a single audit. And as part of that, then we have to go through and evaluate those various federal programs. Um, do a selection, a risk based assessment of which programs are going to be more risk, more risky or less risky. And then make a selection of what programs we have to test. So in the current year, we actually had, or the, the prior year, I should say, in twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty three, we had to, are we selected uh, child nutrition program? Just due to the amount of funding that's received. And then um, the ESER funding, which is, you know, all linked to COVID and some rigorous federal standards. So you can only imagine some of the requirements we had to look at there. Crystal clear instructions by our wonderful federal government on that one. Uh, but again, just due to the, the level of funding and some of the complex issues that we have to look into, we just need to make sure that the district is operating those programs efficiently. Um, evaluating the eligibility appropriately and then spending those federal funds on their designated purposes. So all of those uh, programs that we did have to test, there's no findings or no compliance issues we have to report for you for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Couple other things that we end up assisting the district with as well, um, is fi- uh, you're working with DPI and filing the fifteen oh six AC report, which is the audited certification of the district's uh, financials, just on, on DPI side that they used then to help calculate state aids. And um, kind of work through that process. Um, and then lastly, because of that federal single audit, we have to make a federal reporting back to them for the federal data collection form. Uh, which has actually been filed. We have to jump through some hoops with the, a brand new federal system there as well, um, doing an auditor certification. Um, I need to tell Tracy that she needs to log on and do her certification as well. So.
You have to do that tomorrow.
So, um, so all, all that, you know, just one more button to click for you on that one. Um, so all that being said, is any questions on that? Otherwise I can dive into some, um, some financial highlights for you here. Kind of bore you a little bit with a few numbers. Um, second item here for you is just the general fund. So when I talk general fund for DPI's purposes, they mean both, uh, they're, they're separate, the general fund, Fund Ten, and then Fund Twenty Seven is the special education fund. When we report things in the financial statements, we actually combine those funds together because that's all of the education for, so to speak, for all students in the district. So these numbers reflect both ten and twenty seven activity. Uh, the first section here, you've got your, your summary balance sheet. And again, this is a spot in time, this is as of six thirty year end numbers, you know, the next day they obviously all change. So when we're looking at this from an audit perspective, we look at trends. What is something that really jumps off the page and can we explain it or, you know, what kind of looks a little funny? Um, really overall, there isn't a ton of change overall that you're going to look at and say, oh my gosh, this is kind of really jumping off the page at me and really question a lot of that stuff. Um, number one is going to be cash. You're going to say, okay, that, that probably increased a lot. Um, and there'll be a few other items here that, you know, definitely explains why my cash proceeds at, in the general fund or my cash balances um, are greater than they were the year before or customary, or customarily in the historical summary here. So then it's just a matter of when we're looking at financial health of the district, uh, we look at the general fund and, you know, that's the true operations of your district. Where do you fall in your reserves at the end of the year? So that's that fund balance section where you start seeing that first shaded line up there for you. So fund balance, again, that's like your equity and your private uh, businesses that you would see or your net income type, type uh, items are being recorded in there. So your, your fund balance is going to fall into a number of categories here. The first being non-spendable, meaning that it's not, we can't rely on those resources. They might have been spent already or we need to wait for something to happen um, in order to free up those resources. Maybe a collectability issue for a long term receivable, or in this case, we've already spent that, that resource in a prepaid item is what the non-spendable item is there for you. Um, next, the next bucket is restricted. So the restricted funds there, meaning there were, there's restrictions placed on there that these are reserves again, that they're going to be used in a future fiscal period. And they are set aside for a restricted state grant um, program at this point, which I believe this one is getting kids ahead. So um, the money was received during fiscal year twenty twenty three. Some of that has actually been incurred and expensed during this year, but not all of it. It needs to be set aside to fund that going forward due to the state mandate and it must be used for that. Um, the next bucket that we're using is the committed, uh, what's known as committed resources. So that means that there's formal action at the board level that's committed dollars for future purposes. Um, the, the dollar amount isn't necessarily discussed every year, but the purpose is in place and it requires formal board action to take that commitment and change it to something else. So the board does have the ability to change this and use those resources for something else. So you should choose. The two commitments that we have to report are self-insurance and then the long-term facilities planning or capital, capital um, repairs and maintenance type items. So those two items are reported there uh, for those, those specific purposes. Um, the next section, which is a newer one that we haven't used here at the district in a while, is assigned. So the assigned fund balance means that, again, these resources have come into the district, they're set aside for a specific purpose. But it doesn't necessarily need a formal board action to make them move. Um, Bonnie and Tracy and the, the finance team has been designated by, by district policy. That they can then kind of direct to those resources as necessary. So it's just a little bit more of a restriction than just, oh, well, the last category is by default, assigned fund balance. That's just in general, that's what's left over, that can be used for whatever purpose. So the assigned fund balance to back up to what that actually consists of is actually two items. And we felt it necessary, kind of accommodate, uh, conversation between Tracy and myself is uh, the biggest item there um, to the tune of one point eight million dollars of that two point three million that you see there is for insurance proceeds from the, the, the storm damage, the hills, hailstorm and whatnot. So the reason that that exists is, um, you know, the hailstorm came through, we had, the, the insurance company came and just wrote, wrote the district a check for seven point five billion dollars essentially and said, go start fixing things. Um, it's been tracked, the process is in place. That was what was left over of that initial, hey, let's start making repairs and figure out where you're at type uh, perspective. So technically, it's not restricted by anybody. You could do it like, uh, like I did in my personal house of my rain gutters got dinged up and I pocketed the cash and moved on. So technically, we could free up that resource and it could theoretically be used for anything. But obviously, it's in the best interest of the district to repair your rain gutters or, or so to speak. And it, since the program or since the, the project was kind of in process, um, you know, they, they issued you, the insurance company issued you a check of like seven and a half million, like I was saying. But the total, uh, the total damages still haven't really been fully figured out, like, you know, more damage was still being found. Uh, we didn't know we were going to be added the total uh, project. So that actually project or the, the whole storm damage issue will be resolved in twenty twenty four, fiscal year twenty twenty four. So that's a long way of saying, to boil it down to what's left over at the end of the year. And that's where your unassigned fund balance is. So when we're weighing how well is, um, how financially healthy is the district? We can compute a ratio and then be able to take that ratio and compare it to all the other school districts and figure out where you're at. So it's unassigned fund balance as a percentage of total general fund expenditures. Again, the general fund expenditures, that's what it takes to run the school district for a year. So we run this ratio and it calculates down to that thirty seven point six percent at the very bottom. Okay, that's all well and good, but what does it actually mean for you? Um, the general, um, I should say, I'll start with the district fund balance policy, which was adopted many years ago. You want to maintain uh, an unassigned fund balance between twenty five and thirty percent. So you're clearly at least meeting that because that's a minimum, that's a floor, um, you'd want to start there. So you're definitely meeting your district policy. On average, other districts within uh, Western Wisconsin here, they're anywhere between twenty six to thirty percent is what we're normally seeing. Um, that percentage has crept upwards in the last number of years just because a lot of, of COVID funding is still there. And then they're, you know, slowly spending that down. Um, so that's where we're at on a, on an average within the area, geographic area. Um, and then in, then you're looking at an industry target. From an outside standpoint, like a CPA or a financial advisor, they're going to look, what is your ratio and how does that compare to what we would expect? And typically within the industry, you want twenty five to thirty three percent, you know, three months to six months, somewhere in that timeframe or that, that timeframe of operating expenses. Um, to be considered financially healthy or fiscally solid. So you're definitely meeting all of those criterias. Um, and it does allow you to, a lot of benefits there to maintain that, um, that fund balance percentage. Obviously, you could come down a little bit, but you know, what, you know, what we start experiencing as far as benefits or cons at that point. So where you're at currently, you don't have to rely on any short term borrowings. Uh, the main primary, you know, funding source is property taxes. So with the property tax collection schedule, a lot of the districts in the area actually have to short term borrow and then incur one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars in interest every year, just to short term borrow and make summer payrolls. Um, you're obviously not experiencing that here. It also allows you to have financing flexibility for any um, unexpected repairs and maintenance that might need to come up. You don't have to rely on issuing any debt, any debt in order to pay for the emergency fund. Um, and then lastly, obviously, if you have long term capital needs, um, you can then maybe self-fund some of that on the short term uh, without needing to incur as much long term debt going forward, if you know what your project is going to be. So overall, uh, I would say that from my perspective, thirty seven point six percent, which even though it does dip, if you compare that number to twenty twenty two, you added to your, your unassigned fund balance, but then obviously, when you look at twenty twenty three's general fund expenditures, that crept up, you know, at a greater rate. So, but overall, thirty seven point six percent is uh, fiscally healthy. Um, you know, you're operating well within your operating budget, so the district is doing a tremendous job here for twenty twenty three. Um, the other number to just make note of in passing is the change in fund balance there. Although it does say nine point nine million, seven and a half million of that is those insurance proceeds, which is obviously not going to occur every single year. So you did still add to fund balance um, to the tune of like, what, seven point two million or seven point four mil, or two point four million, excuse me, two point four million for the uh, fiscal year twenty twenty three. Switching over to your.
Jonathan, I got a couple, couple of questions for you. Uh, when, when we looked at our, uh, part of the reason why our expenditures are up almost eight million over the previous years because of the insurance work that we had done, is that correct?
That is going to be part of it, yes. Yes, absolutely. So the, of you, you got seven point five million in the um, other financing sources and uses. So that's seven point five million is the, the revenue coming in. And yes, we compared that to an additional, just over five million dollars in um, insurance expenses as well, the repairs of those.
So of the nine point nine million, it's not necessarily that seven point five is sitting in the insurance money that's not expended. It would just be the two point eight that's sitting in the insurance money that's not expended.
Right, correct.
So we, we did actually increase our actual fund balance by over seven million dollars. Non-insurance fund balance.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make, want to make sure not, not the two point two.
Correct.
Thanks.
Looking at the rest of your funds then here, um, on the next page. So these are the special revenue funds, which are required to be spent, um, or tried, required to be tracked by DPI in a separate fund. And they're supposed to be, or they're, they need to be a designated revenue source going in there to support these activities. So the education trust, that's your Fund Twenty One. Um, Fund Fifty for your food service fund and then your Fund Eighty for education and recreation. So that's childcare, the adult ed, and then I believe the um, uh, the weight room, community activities are all run out of Fund Eighty. So when we're looking at the special revenue funds in, in a school district setting, it's essentially the revenues should be supporting the expenses. So the charges for service in order to use these services should be at least cash flowing themselves. You want them to be breaking even or coming back at a mi- at some sort of modest return. So if you have capital needs to support those in the future, those needs are being met. Excuse me, so you can see going forward or from twenty twenty onwards, you can see that your fund balance is actually increasing. So you're meeting that objective. Um, the only time that I really speak more on these is if they all of a sudden dip negative for any specific reason. Um, then there should be, you know, something put in place to correct that. So the only one that was negative in the past, um, was twenty, in twenty twenty, you see uh, your community uh, ed and recreation. Well, the impact of COVID when we had to still essentially provide some of those services, um, or still have expenses for those services. But you weren't collecting any revenues for childcare for, 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 for instance. So all of that has been remedied and is now working in a positive light there for you.
Right, any other questions or any light to add?
I do have a quick question, Mr. President. What changed in the way we are accounting for the food service fund from twenty one through the present?
Um, the, in twenty twenty one, there would have been additional capital items that needed to be purchased in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one that would have, that needed to be supported by food service lunches. And then the big change is during twenty twenty, during COVID time periods, the um, food service basically all, completely turned into free revenue essentially. So there was, there was no paid lunch. It was completely covered by federal sources. So because of those changes, basically you had increased expenses in prior periods. So DPI doesn't require you to have a zero fund balance or a, a negative fund balance. Um, it zeroes itself out, the general fund makes that coverage. And then the increased funding um, from the federal government through that child nutrition program, that we, that's the federal component. That's the main driver of revenue into Fund Fifty. So it's not that we changed anything from an accounting standpoint, it's purely based on the operations. Um, and from that standpoint, if DPI and the federal government, we'll look at Fund Fifty and they'll make sure that the, the price that you're charging for meals is a certain level. And if it ever gets too rich by, you know, lack of a better term, they'll require you to spend that down or adjust prices downward in order to alleviate or essentially use up some of those resources. So that one is maintained and, and um, monitored by federal sources as well. Uh, moving on to the debt service fund, uh, this, you technically have two fund service funds available to you. You, you utilize Fund Thirty Nine for referendum debt. Um, any reserves that you're seeing here are budgeted and helped with your financial advisor, I believe you guys used Baird um, in order to help schedule out your debt payments. So the, uh, these reserves are, are set up to be used for future payments. Um, in twenty twenty three, the district paid four point five million dollars in principal and two point seven million dollars in interest. And on the, on all of the outstanding debt, um, I'll talk about a little bit what's left outstanding here in a few minutes. Um, so just know that this is restricted for. Um, so just know that this is restricted for future debt service needs. The next item here is capital projects funds. So this one's obviously going to look a little different than it has in the past. Uh, during fiscal, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, the district issued bond anticipation notes, the twenty-nine million dollars on that's set aside to be used for your capital improvement plan, uh, repairs, maintenance and expansion. Uh, all that I'm sure that you're well aware of. Um, so the site expansion remodel capital project fund itself is where all those reserves are being tracked and being managed. Uh, so any project costs related to that, um, will be taken out of those proceeds going forward. Looking at long-term debt obligations, these are all the long-term debts that are the obligations of the district in total. Um, the really important ones for you guys to take a look at are the top three lines, the GO bonds, GO notes, and then that bond anticipation note. So that's where you can see that twenty-nine million is, uh, um, they're basically the only activity that you had for any issuances during the year. Um, when in July of twenty twenty-three, um, that was refunded and it'll, so next year, that twenty-nine million will just actually hop up to that top line there for you. So that's the one that'll increase is the general obligation bonds. Um, so to give you some context, the GO bonds consist of the fifty-eight million dollar issuance. That's, uh, fifty-eight million dollars outstanding, that's going to be good, or that's payable through twenty thirty-six. Um, the three point three five million is outstanding payable through twenty twenty-seven is when all those obligations will fall off. Twenty-four million, uh, is through twenty forty-three. Uh, and that twenty-four million that's there, that's the refunded portion of that twenty, that bond anticipation note. So that's the longest, uh, debt that you have outstanding is through twenty forty-three with the new debt that was just issued. Um, and then lastly, the GO note, that six point seven million that you see sitting there, um, that falls off through twenty twenty-seven. So the only other notes when you're looking at this and some numbers that might say, oh my gosh, where did this twelve billion dollars come from under that WRS pension liability? Um, the quick explanation there is that's, the district is part of the WRS retirement system. Um, so down at Madison, that's the, the, the comparison between all the WRS employees and the obligations that are outstanding compared to the resources that Madison has as investments to offset those. In the past, for the last three years, we've actually reported an asset. And now in twenty twenty-three, due to economic conditions, um, it's just slightly underfunded. Normally it's like a hundred and two percent funded, which is one of the best in the entire nation. Um, we're down to like ninety-eight point two percent or something like that, just due to the investments on hand, um, to offset that. So it's not a liability that the district would ever have to fund at this point. Um, if it would start growing into, you know, fifty percent unfunded, you know, heaven forbid that would happen. Uh, it's like to our neighbors to the south in the state of Illinois. Um, but we, at this point, we don't have to worry about writing a check down there to cover that. Um, wait a year, I'm going to guess that, uh, investments will come back up and we'll then be reporting a, uh, a WRS asset again on our books. So when you see that one there, we're required to report it obviously because it is your contractual obligation, but it's not something you'd have to write a check for or plan for in the future. So when you're looking at what your total, uh, GO debt is, um, you do have a state limit of, um, you know, it's ten percent of all equalized value within the district. That's what the state legal limit would be. So theoretically you could issue all the way up into that limit, uh, but politically you'd be very unpopular having hit that entirely. Um, so when we're looking at school districts, I usually say anywhere between, as soon as you get upwards of twenty-five to thirty percent of your total limit. Um, for reference, you're using that fifteen point five percent of your total limit, li- total limit. You, you have some available borrowing capacity. So as soon as you get to that twenty-five to thirty percent, like I was saying, I would consider a district like that in that situation to be highly leveraged, carrying a lot of debt, um, because that obviously directly impacts, uh, where you would need to go with, um, a levy, a school district levy, property tax levy. So all that being said, um, all good news, um, really not any major rate plagues outside of, you know, a couple of things here or there just to, to comment on and just, you know, pay attention to where you're going with your budget. And you're doing a tremendous job here at the, at the district, so, um, any questions I can answer or comments I can address?
Anybody? Just to clarify, up on number four there, uh, that debt service fund. So we saw that go up, um, you know, by about five million compared to what it was the year before. But those are funds we're expecting to use to pay down the debt in the next year.
Correct. Yep, so due to the, you know, the cycle of when we actually budget for it versus when those, those bond payments are due, we always just obviously, uh, work very closely with Baird and figure out, okay, in November, when is my next debt payment? And what does that need to be? Um, so because we're crossing fiscal years, that's why it jumps up is because you, you issued the new debt and you'd have to make a new payments on it in the next fiscal year. So we need to have those reserves set aside to meet that principal and interest payment.
Anything else? Always, thank you very much for the report, appreciate it, Jonathan.
Absolutely.
I like to hear good news, hopefully stick with that next year.
I didn't clear the room entirely for you though, so. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. All right, community conversation, design team update, Nick?
Yeah, just wanted to do a brief update. We had our very first, uh, design team meeting, uh, Megan's on the, uh, committee and so is Kate. Um, just want to give an update that, uh, it was a great group, uh, folks that we have involved in it. They identified over three hundred and forty individuals to be a part of the big community conversation. So we're in the process right now of continuing to identify individuals and also getting the contact information of those individuals. A reminder that our big community conversation is April fourth, fifth and sixth. Uh, there's information on our website, links on our website where people can search RSVP. You're going to see a lot more information coming out about this over the next, uh, two months. But really looking forward to having this conversation and getting feedback, uh, from our community about what they want out of their schools and how we can help deliver that for them. So really looking forward to that.
So that's the first Thursday, Friday and Saturday of April.
That is correct.
Any questions? All right, uh, next up, uh, the school board election update.
Absolutely, so just a update on the school board election. We did have the, uh, we have five candidates running for three seats, uh, this upcoming school board election on April second. I think on Friday, uh, there was a ballot draw. So that's the order in which the, uh, candidates will appear on the ballot. And Jamie, you were present for that along with two other witnesses. Uh, so you can see Bob Baumann, oh, uh, Randy Lawson, Kate Garza, Maria Rudy and Molly Powers in the order of the ballot draw. And so, uh, that's how the ballot will appear. There is no primary, so the election will be held on April second, uh, coming up here in about three months. So good luck to everybody that's running.
Any questions? Seeing none, then staff, family fun night, Andrea?
Yes, so just, uh, want to put you guys, uh, make you guys aware that Sunday, February fourth, we'll be having our third, our fourth, third annual family fun night, I believe. Um, encourage you guys to come as board members. We had, I think almost four hundred people, four hundred staff and their families come last year. It's a really fun night. We're going to be having a sign-up for Hudson lead members. Sometimes it's easier if you come that you are in charge of an activity or something. It kind of gives you something to, to specifically do with staff. We're doing everything from roller skating to, um, um, face painting, we have crafts, we have, and we're going to do, um, make pom poms and have snowball fights in the west gym. So, um, we do everything from littles and have movies. Yeah, fat snow. Our theme for the year is going to be, um, ignite your health for our wellness challenge for this year. So it's kind of our kickoff to the next thirty-five days leading into spring break. Um, so it's, it's turned into a bigger event over the years and it's really been fun. And it's been one that's, staff has specifically requested us to repeat, so we're excited.
Location?
At the high school, four to six on Sunday.
Okay, so I must have been on eastern time, I had it five to seven, but you want people there at four o'clock?
I believe it's four to six. Um, yeah, because I think we shifted a little earlier because we moved it to a Sunday night. Um, and so we have food, free food, free activities, all of it's free for our staff and their families.
So for those people that are football, uh, crazy, uh, that is not a football Sunday.
It is not, it's the weekend after the Super Bowl, yes.
Weekend before the Super Bowl.
The weekend before, okay, so I knew it wasn't the Super Bowl.
Between conference championships and, you know, Super Bowl. Not that anybody watches football around here.
One year it was the state, um, our boys were at state for hockey and we had the, on the big screen going, so that was fun and.
Well, let's, uh, hopefully we have some teams in, at state then, but.
Yeah, that time of year.
Sounds like a fun night and, uh, I'm going to try and keep it reserved. So, um, are young family members like grandkids welcome?
They sure are, and we have quite a few that come. We have, um, a couple of families that had multi-generations at the event and that was a lot of fun.
Okay, good. All right, I'll try to get my grandkids up from Rochester then. All right, now, uh, last up of reports, we just have the board member district activity recap. I don't know, Lynn and I were at the girls' hockey game, of course she's a hockey parent, it was parent night on, uh, Friday night. Uh, and I've seen it a couple of times with, uh, uh, both boys and girls, basketball. And of course we had the musical concert since our last board meeting as well. Anybody else? Okay, very good. Moving on then, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items with language of expenditures that are on the screen.
I make a motion to move for the approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents.
Is our second? Okay, we have our second. There is no discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I always like it when the number is under a million, it just sounds like we're being very austere. So, um, but we have some resignations, is that?
Some retirements, yeah, some big retirements, um, and I'm going to actually have Dave start it off.
Yeah, so one I wish we were not announcing, but, um, very much want to congratulate Lisa Scoy, and the assistant director of teaching and learning who will be retiring. Um, whenever I make a mistake, that means I didn't consult with Lisa. When I do something that we celebrate, that means I made sure to consult with Lisa. She is an amazing leader, um, has contributed in so many ways. Um, e- everything that we've accomplished in the world of teaching and learning, Lisa has been part of that. Um, she's, um, will be greatly missed. So, um, if, if we could just have you not act on that, that would be great.
Yeah, right, well, yeah.
A little too late, right?
That's too late, we already did, we can't, yeah. Is there a motion for reconsideration?
Yeah, I, Lisa might not like that so much. Um, and then a couple, several others. So last year we only had a couple of retirements, this year we have a lot of big retirements. First up after Lisa is Steve Solem, a math teacher at the high school, thirty-five years of service in the Hudson School District. Uh, Kathy Shavey, a fifth grade teacher at EP Rock, twenty-three years, um, in the Hudson School District. Veronica Guzman, fifth grade at Rivercrest, um, twenty-seven, or I'm sorry, thirty-seven years of service in the district. So I know a couple of years ago, the recognition banquet, she hit the thirty-five and we don't have that very often for teachers. So then we have Krista Anderson, uh, speech and language pathologist, uh, twenty-seven years in the school district. Mark Randall, um, is a strive teacher at the high school and he has fourteen years of service. And then Mary Cormican, um, special ed teacher at EP Rock, just two years in Hudson, but multiple years in other positions in other districts. So those are, between that group and the group we've recognized previously, it's going to be a really full recognition banquet and that's super exciting.
And that's on May sixth?
I believe so. I know we have the date reserved and I believe Tim's been communicating it out, so hopefully I, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I got on my, on my phone, uh.
I will double check and get back to you, but I believe, yeah, I know we have it booked and we're already working on it.
Yeah, I think I did the math calculation, it's like, with those five retirements, it's like almost a hundred and fifty years.
Yeah, just with them and there was big ones, I mean, um, of a high school, yeah, there's quite a few ones with a lot of your service that we're losing here. But a really nice, um, thing, a lot of these people, majority of the retirees are also, um, participants in our veteran ambassadors and are excited about that's like soft landing transition where they're coming back, they're already committed to coming back and supporting our brand new teachers. So that's a pretty cool transition.
That is, that's excellent, thank you and thank, I thank them for their service as well and we'll thank them again in May. Next up, EP Rock Elementary Title One Plan, Dave?
Thank you, we'll keep this very brief. We presented on this, uh, just at the last meeting. Uh, so EP Rock is now, um, participating in a school-wide Title One program, which is, um, all of our other schools are in a targeted program. School-wide programs require board approval of the plan. The plan was summarized in the report, it is here in its full glory, a lot of detail, um, was, like I said, summarized before. And most of the detail is represented in the district goals that we've looked at, um, several times in the past.
And, uh, this is something we're required to make a motion to approve?
That is correct.
All right, um, I'll entertain such a motion right now. We have a motion by Bob, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And the Title One Plan is approved. Is this an annual or a biannual thing that we have to do?
Annual.
Annual, all right, very good. So we'll see this, uh, this time next year. Um, second reading of the seven hundred policy revisions.
These are the same policies that you saw at the last action meeting and they also coincide with the same that you saw at the work session prior to that. So the administration's recommendation is to approve the policies as presented.
So moved.
You have a motion, a second? Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, the second reading passes. We are now through the seven hundred series. Um, then district library plan, Dave?
Yep, this will be another quick one. Jen Lotzi and Sarah Engstrom presented, the entire media team worked hard on this plan. Um, this is another required approval. This guides the work that the media specialists do at all levels. They provided a pretty detailed report just last month.
Yes, they did. And in there, they were talking about some of the ways that the district collaborates with the Hudson Library. Um, but in, so those, all of those are intended to continue.
Absolutely.
And, uh, anybody that has specific questions about that, they can see Dave or Jen, right?
Certainly.
And that's why Jen, being our IT person, it's not, it's more than just library, this is more than just getting rid of a bunch of old books. It's, uh, very integrated and, um, you know.
Right, all things media.
Yes, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, Megan moved and Bob second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And, um, another statutory obligation accomplished. Next up, first reading of transportation policies.
If you have questions, I'm sure Andrew can answer them, but these are the same policies that you saw at the work session. Uh, just getting our policies up to date so that we are through our rotation. So the administration's recommendation would be to approve the first reading of these couple of transportation policies.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Move to approve the first reading of the transportation policies? Second?
All right, we have a motion by Lynn, second by Molly, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Next up, the delegate assembly resolutions.
This is as exciting as it gets.
Yes, this is what I've been waiting for all night long.
I know, for all you folks in the crowd. So we, we go through as an administrative team, uh, this has been a very, this is actually a pretty light year as it relates to resolutions for the delegate assembly. There aren't any on here that we wouldn't recommend the, uh, delegate, uh, approving. Um, sometimes we will go through, uh, and they don't need to go through each and every one of these. Sometimes we go through and there'll be some that we would say, um,
Why we're not approving?
Why we're not, why we're not for it. And a lot of times it has to do, it has a negative, uh, financial impact on our district based on our makeup and things along those lines. Uh, but I know, uh, Molly will be already fulfilling her, her duties as the alternate, um, at the delegate assembly and so.
And I'm the alternate to the alternate because I'm already on the committee, so I have to be at this assembly.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
Wait, but you guys will have, this is extremely light compared to last year. Last year there was twenty-nine resolutions. Delegates started getting up and walking out in the middle of the meeting, seriously. We were going for three and a half hours and, uh, people just, we, we ended up having to quit the meeting because we lost the quorum. So, uh, this is a different year, as Nick said, um.
I think there's eleven of these.
Yeah, there is only eleven this year and two of them are actually conglomerates prepared by WASB, which is that whole situation where you're reviewing policies and just trying to update stuff and make it more current. And so, yeah, all I can say is at the resolution committee, we actually had a resolution committee member get up and, and leave. That, that controversial resolution never made it to this list. So that's why there's really nothing to, uh, get too, uh, worked up about. But, uh, hopefully we're improving and, and moving forward and that's the idea. It's, it's just hard, WASB is, you know, such a diverse group and for whatever reason Milwaukee gets two people, uh, on this committee. And, um, then it's interspersed throughout the whole, we get two for every, uh, what is it, district? WASB district?
Yeah.
Yeah, region, I guess, I don't know if they call them districts.
I think Milwaukee has one out of every ten, one out of every ten students in the state graduate from Milwaukee public schools.
Yeah, all, all I can say is that, that's been the fun of being on that committee is talking to the folks from Milwaukee and just coming back and feeling how great it is to be from Hudson. and just coming back and feeling how great it is to be from Hudson. Did I say that on camera? All right, yeah, all right, good. Um, so uh, is there uh, is there a motion to approve the administration's recommendations to give Molly some guidance on how to vote?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, the ayes have it.
There you go. Have fun, Molly.
Yeah. Next up is the contract to list the district office.
So this is the contract to list the dis- district office for sale. This is as a result of our, you know, we did not pass a referendum this spring. We did a post-referendum survey. The feedback we got from the community was to start uh, jettisoning some, some district property and things along those lines before we go back and ask for uh, a referendum again. So we will be, uh, the recommendation, this is the same contract that you saw back in December at the work session. The recommendation from the administration is to uh, list the property for sale here with Tellus Real Estate and uh, put it on the market so that we can get this sold. Uh, the district office will then be moving into the middle school. Uh, probably sometime about a year from now or so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I will be recusing myself from this vote.
All right. Thank you, uh, Lynn. So she's not going to participate in either the discussion or the vote. Uh, you know, I think the most pertinent things of this listing contract is the fact that um, the asking price is just that, it's a list price. And so we could have people offer us more, less, whatever, but the point of getting somebody, a professional who knows commercial properties in detail is to get the best price we can for our taxpayer. And um, so that listing price on this contract is two point one five million. And uh, we have a variable interest rate depending, or the commission, depending on if the commission is generated um, from the same realtor or from a different reality company, which is pretty standard.
This agreement's been reviewed by our attorney and uh, feel it's a very favorable agreement for the school district.
With that, is there any one want to, have any other questions of Nick or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve to uh, the contract to list the district office.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of approving uh, the listing contract signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It's unanimously approved and uh, we do have our quorum of uh, voting for that. So we got four votes despite the absences and the recusal. So with uh, the next uh, determina- let's see, it's this is the determination on the open enrollment for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Now I gotta get used to saying that, twenty-four, twenty-five.
We're already looking at twenty-four, twenty-five. So we talked about this at the work session where um, we're continuing our recommendation of the practice of uh, for regular ed purposes, having um, open spaces at all four K through twelve. Um, and then specific to student services will be tariffed.
And doing the opposite in the world of special education, there will be zero open spaces for our K twelve or pre-K twelve spots.
All right. So the sh- the, then this, for special ed, there are no open enrollment spots for non-special ed in the general would be that there's no restrictions.
Exactly.
Uh, that doesn't mean that we approve every single application, but um, there's, there's space.
Space and with, as, with respect to elementary specifically, we don't place them until much later in the process. Um, and so they can't, they are not guaranteed at particular school. They're guaranteed a spot in our system.
Yeah, this is the first step in the process required by statute. It has to be done on an annual basis. Is there um, a motion to approve the administration's recommendation?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. And uh, yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Now, last up, we have a question, uh, is the bid pack, first bid pack on our um, reconstructions at North Hudson, EP Rock and the middle school.
So uh, just to kind of go through this, what you have is the documents uh, put together by our construction manager. Bid pack one only has one item in, in it for each of the three buildings. It's actually, it's the backup generator, emergency generator and the switchgear that connects the generator to the building. The reason why we had to put this as its own separate bid pack is because the lead time on this is a little over twelve months uh, to get this. And so uh, you can see, we did get multiple bids on this and this is literally just for the piece of equipment. It's not even installing the equipment. It has nothing to do with it. It's just, you have to go through a vendor in order to uh, to secure the product. Um, you can see the recommendation uh, by uh, uh, by Market and Johnson uh, is I believe it's uh, Simon Electric for all three of the generators. Uh, we were under our projected budget uh, for the two elementary ones and uh, slightly over our projected budget for our middle school one. These generators uh, are used to, they back up power for uh, our coolers, refrigerators, you know, related to food service. They will keep our uh, that heating system running in the case of a power outage in the winter so our buildings don't freeze. They also do life safety things uh, like our emergency lighting uh, and our servers and our ability to communicate in the building. But they do not back up the entire building. You couldn't just operate the building on these generators indefinitely. So, um.
These are intended for emergency, short-term.
These are emergency, short-term use. Yep.
And but, you know, but we have to have them. It's kind of a, a necessary item for the entire length of the project or pretty much like ninety percent of the length of it?
No, the, these are permanent. These are, the, these are permanent. This is, this is the new standard. Um, when you build buildings now, is you, you have to have uh, backup power for life safety.
Okay.
So, um, so this is.
We're currently operating without?
Uh, the middle school currently has a generator that is about thirty-some years old, kind of about on its last leg. And the two elementaries, because they were grandfathered at the time, they do not have generators. So these will be new items for them to be able to have those things.
Very good. All right. Any questions? Any questions other than that? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve and so we can get these ordered and they get here.
So moved.
All right, motion by Molly, second by Megan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And uh, that motion is approved. And uh, gosh, we ran out of items. I was hoping we'd have another closed session or something we could go into, but I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second for, by Lynn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.